We have.
What maggot? Listen. Cool. All the order. Um, are there any public comments? Is that what we do first?
Yep.
I would just comment that the select board this evening is considering the request we got from Sustainable Williston about having a localized heat standard as referred through the energy committee.
And let's just formally welcome Hannah to the planning department. She's here tonight. Come to a planning commission, see all of you and see what we do here. But if you come in during work hours, she's usually going to be the one behind the front desk.
And this is probably great. This is probably a time for me to say I have to leave at eight twenty-five today. I might be able to jump back on Zoom, but I need to be home by eight thirty.
Okay.
Sorry.
Great. Should we look at the minutes?
Oh.
So. I don't know if you wanted that paragraph where I highlighted and put it. That's me. Um, but I had first started editing, trying to make it make more sense. And then there should be a whole paragraph in the comments. Can we see that? Yeah, there we go. I tried rewriting it more succinctly because I didn't like, I still didn't like where it came out. And so if people like what's in the comment there as well or better, I think it's more coherent.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I don't know if you want to take a minute to look at it.
So basically take what's in the.
What I highlighted, yeah.
And then replace this. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. What does that one do? Anything? Kind of new one or this?
What's that?
Oh, that's the letter of support for the solar project.
And then on the next section, the blue update served by Megan. Oh, speaking of. They're making room for you every day.
Now we can make room for you on this side. So you can see the screen. Wait a minute. Did anyone else have comments they wanted to make on the minutes or issues with the revisions that were made?
Most of my changes were more just clarifying things and trying to word things so that people in the future could understand what we're talking about.
I was in after you, Megan, and I thought your things were all good. You had crossed your name out of the absence section, but you didn't put it in.
I didn't do that. Somebody else did.
Oh, someone else did that. Okay. Anyway, I put you into the present section.
Thank you. That was guest user.
Um, okay. And um, we went by it a minute ago, but the second paragraph in where I was talking about, you actually brought up working landscapes being historically agricultural.
Hmm.
I sort of rewrote that paragraph. Um. The. The shaded part is in the. It's rewritten because I started editing that and I was having trouble.
Yeah. Such a diary.
Oh, no.
Last sentence. Diary is starting.
Thanks for catching me.
We do it all the time.
I'm ready.
Do we have a motion for them?
I can move. We adopt the minutes as amended.
Second.
All on favor?
Pardon?
Any opposed? Any abstained? But we are.
Jill froze.
That might be on.
But Jill, but they're kind of around.
All right. Uh, up next is the annual report for two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah, we. Kind of talked about this before, but I just. For whoever is working on it, I don't remember if we decided.
I nominated Stephen.
This is just, I. A really quick rundown month by month on the agendas of what we did.
By the way, right there, that's right about in the middle of the screen where it says January two thousand sixteen, I think that's two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Other than.
I tried to highlight it when I went through, but I guess it's not. It didn't.
No, this is just a PDF. Yeah. So I, I can send the word version of this to anybody who wants it and.
It was nice to see this and see it chronologically.
Yeah, and I, you know, my takeaway is the same as when I was talking about it um, more informally last time, which is just, hey, the group did a lot of really good work in a short, you know, years short in. Planning Commission time, and this was really terrific to see.
And I'd like to add one thing, which is something we didn't do, which we, we decided to table the village master plan. While we worked on. These other things, right? So essentially it's in suspense.
It's been the back burner redheaded stepchild for a while.
Yes.
Somehow I felt we should acknowledge that it's still on our plan and we didn't.
Make progress because of, we prioritized it lower than these things. Yeah.
Well, I think we did roundtables in October and November, and then we can codify when the survey.
Yeah.
Was open and get some stats on. Those numbers.
I thought we had one December roundtable, but I got that wrong. We had one early December one, but I don't remember. Maybe we had it all wrapped up before Thanksgiving.
I think we tried to avoid December.
It might be that they were on the agendas to like.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I just did this running through agendas.
And we might have been talking a little bit about survey outreach at that point, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see where the survey was.
Yeah.
In here.
We'll make this an editable thing. We can throw stuff at it and then. Trim it to one page.
Yeah. With photographs.
Yes, with photographs.
And then also, that's always a chance for us to document um, in yet another space, um, the. Plan Commission members because we do changeover on July first. Yeah. So.
We. Anything else people wanted to add to the list? Good. All right, up next we have town plan draft chapters. Um, team green with transportation and mobility as well as a memo. From Public Works on the path and sidewalk progress. Matt, do you want to go first or you want to?
Yeah, um, so what I wanted to do was number one, just make sure everybody got that memo that Bruce wrote for the select board. Um. And hopefully some folks here have had a chance to. Take a look at it. I know Megan did because she sent me a map she made, uh, which we can also share, uh, which was, which was terrific. And I just wanted to, I wanted to bring transportation back because I really think, um. Liking and wanting more bicycle pedestrian infrastructure is one of those sort of top four or five things that our public engagement brought out. Um, it's something people. Talk a lot about when they talk to planning and when they talk to their, their decision makers. Um. And. The memo, so the memo Bruce wrote summarizes activities that have taken place around bicycle pedestrian infrastructure. Really going back to the establishment of the bond over twenty years ago. So the town took out a great big loan. Um, specifically to build this kind of infrastructure, um, has successfully used it to both build infrastructure and also uh, often to leverage other money to build infrastructure. And. So one of the critiques of the town's activities in this area has been that it's, it's slow. Uh, but you know, the bond is more than twenty years old. Um. Can't you just go spend all the money? And you know, some of the reason for that. Is that um, the town has tried to take the opportunities it can to make that money go as far as possible, um, you know, by playing it against other grant opportunities. The other answer that, um. I don't think is necessarily embedded in Bruce's memo, but it's really true is. Infrastructure is just really hard and really complicated and takes a really long time to plan and build. And it's true whether it's um. Bike or road infrastructure. Um, and you know, I note that. Over the course of. The same timeframe as this bond. While developers have built some new roads in Williston, some of which have become, become public. The town hasn't built any. Uh, we're, we're not building, we're not building roads.
Not since Marshall Avenue.
Not since Marshall Avenue. I think that is the last time and that is going on. Thirty years, I think now that, and that was connecting the stuff of Marshall, you know, through to, um. To South Burlington. Um. So. There has been some progress made. Um. I think that this is, this is a good summary and also. You know, Bruce notes in this section that we've got on the screen, areas with biggest disconnect areas, um, that. That are, that are not connected. Um, but also, you know, notes that these are, um, not ones the town is taking a lot of action on right now. In other words, they're in the state tip, the transportation improvement plan, they're not funded. One, one course of action would be for the town to continue to do what it's been doing, which is, you know, wait and see. Um, and you know, if I had to guess, that's probably the course of action that results in the longest timeframe between, you know, now and something happening on those projects. It's for the group to think about proposing uh, in plan language, whether. There's interest in trying to take action to speed those up. And. The, the one action on Mountain View Road and Taff Corners to Village Connection that the town has taken. Is to place them both in the transportation impact fee project list. Not as fully funded projects, but as essentially like hundred thousand dollar projects. On the theory that, um, if the town spent some money or time and effort on them, it might be able to accelerate their, um, construction. And in fact, this fiscal year that's just started. July one, um, we will be working with CCRPC on reexamining the scoping for the Taff Corners to Village project and you'll, you'll get some involvement in that. Coming up. Um. Working on it that way is one way of sort of thinking about trying to move it along is, um. Refreshing that study. So. Other than that, um. You know. I think this memo could be a basis for. You know, when you, when you map these areas, when you map these, um, gaps. Starting to think about the completion of each of these gaps as an action level item at the end of this chapter. Probably under, um. There might be a strategy related to establishing a funding source. There might be a strategy related to investing, um, more bandwidth, whether it's, um, unified planning work programs into CCRPC or more staff time in them. The goals would be to, to move these projects forward. The objective above that and the question I would have is, um. What? When you get done doing whatever this town plan calls for. What does bike pad infrastructure in Williston look like? You know, I keep using that objective. It's like, what's, what are you seeing? Um. Is, is the result of this? And. Um, is it? That there are parts of the town that are. Kind of complete network? Is it that the worst gaps have been filled? Is it that? We're just going to do as many projects as we can. Um, when the opportunity arises. So that's, that's where I think the plan can really start to provide. A strong statement that can then be sort of discussed and debated with the selectors. Like what is the overall goal here?
Um. It's okay. Uh, I guess a couple, I have a couple thoughts. First of all, I feel like we've. You know, that the official map should be part of that.
Yes.
Documentation as well and. Um, you know, my preference is definitely not to just kind of. Have to work things together as opportunities arise. I think we have in the past agreed as a group. That we need to elevate these as strongly as we can. And that's why they're on the, um. Transportation impact fee schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The result of. The last time we were asked this question, right? Do you want to just? Kind of sit on it or do you want to really make a forceful statement? And. And yet. I don't remember when that was. It was certainly at least a year ago. And there's, you know, again, still no movement, um, except for maybe this little revisiting the scoping study piece.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So I, I feel like. I feel like we. Um, hear from our community over and over and over again about these things, especially the village to Taff Corner space. Um, and it's not just village residents who are saying that. Because people want to get to the school. They want to get to, um. The library, to the soccer fields and, and they want places to walk safely because there's not that much. Uh, you know, safe industrial facilities. Um. And so given that we've been hearing this for so long, certainly the whole time I've been on this commission. It's twenty eleven. I feel like we need to kind of pull out the stops and do what. Our community is telling us and really make. A push. Um, for. For something big that isn't. You know, I think the official map kind of embodies it to some degree. It's like, this is the vision, right? And this is what we want to move toward. Okay, what are the actions that we could take? To. To not just make it happen, but make it happen quicker.
Mm-hmm.
And I realize, of course, infrastructure is, is hard and expensive and all those things. Um. But things do get done and. We don't start now. Fifteen years from now, we're still going to be sitting here saying, yeah, sure, it would be nice if there was a connection between, right? So that's just some of my thoughts.
Okay. I agree. I'm really glad that Bruce itemized things the way he did because it gives us the background that we need. And if you could pull that back up, I wanted to talk about what he identified as some of the hurdles. To, in the end section there. Uh, right there. Um, he used the example, the Maple Tree Place Road that there is in front of Cottonwood. There's a path. It, it starts at Cottonwood. It ends at Cottonwood. It doesn't cross a Maple Tree Place Road there. Um, right. I can see the problem is more than what he said here. It's safety because people do rolling right turns on red coming down Maple Tree Place Road, turning onto Route Two. And if somebody. Is trying to cross there, it's going to be very, because you're crossing three lanes too. Um. So I, I see real design problems there. The next one he said at Zephyr goes back to our philosophy of doing sidewalks when developers will pay for them. And. Uh, um. And then the. Um. Third thing I wanted to say is that. In reading all of this, if we could go back to the list of projects, um. The items right there, ones like, um, partway down where it says, um, Night Lane to the Flag Shop on Route Two A in two thousand fifteen. That's maybe a hundred fifty, two hundred feet. And you know, it looks, some of these projects are big and some are very small. And, um, we've been picking away at them. It also doesn't distinctly, in his narrative, he talks about sidewalks and alternative paths, I think is the word he uses. And the part of the question for me is when is a sidewalk enough? When do we need a pedestrian, a rec path? And when do we need both? And there's times like. Um, that this, when you have a. Path, a rec path on one side and just a sidewalk on the other, that's a pretty decent combination.
Mm-hmm.
But when there's only the rec path is that. Do for a sidewalk too? Or will bicycles not use it because there are pedestrians on it and it's too dangerous? And, and I don't know the answer to that, but I feel like we have an underlying question to answer, which is, when are we talking about sidewalks? When are we talking about rec pads? And when do we need both? Right, there's, to me, there's sorts, the, this. He had a nice number down at the end that it's going to cost one point something million per mile. And. I know in terms of plowing them, if it's. Pavement more than eight feet wide. It can be plowed with a pickup truck and it goes fast.
Right.
Um, so I feel like there's, there's some work to be done in making specifications for the types of paths and on our, um. Plan. Whatever it's called.
Official map?
The official map, thank you. On the official map, identifying which is, is needed for each one.
Um, can you bring up the official map? It doesn't have to be instantaneous. So. That's a really good point. And you know, what I'm, what I'm hearing between what, part of what Maggie said and part of what Chapin said is there's an action. I'm kind of trying to write it down now, which would, or, or there's a, there's a something in the plans is. You know, use the official map tool as a framework to identify, um. Gaps, priorities and actual infrastructure type that's desired. So.
Yes.
Um. On this multi-use path is blue. Sidewalk is red. Dash is desired and solid is constructed. And this is, you know, it's two years old now or what, whatever. Um. So. We don't have to resolve all of it right now, but I think Chapin, your question about when, when do you want which facility? And when does one kind on one side of the road and one kind on the other make sense? Or when, for example, when you had the Trader Lane conversation. Um, with the official map amendment. You switched up the street specification as part of that and said, you want to actually make this one of those kinds of streets that has cycle traffic and sidewalk on both sides. Which is sort of the. The most multimodal of the, of the street types.
Um, that's the deluxe.
Bruce was telling you, you know, the planning commission went and added half a million dollars to that price. But yeah, um. You know, and, and I think. That's, that's an example where I think official map. And, and you know, in concert with Form Based Code actually worked really well is it provided a framework to discuss that amendment and, and can kind of continue to do so as things evolve out there, which is. Hey, that, that's a new street we might actually build. What's it for? What's desirable along it? Um, it's going to serve a transportation need, uh, for, for several modes of travel. It's also going to serve as a. Um, you know, a catalyst for development. Um. How is that all going to work together? And you know, that's. You know. Twenty eleven, twenty twelve, that was the conversation I sat in, in, um, South Burlington Bike Ped Committee about Market Street in city center was. Are we going to put a cycle track behind the buildings? Are we going to put a cycle track on the front of the buildings? Or are we going to do what ended up happening, which is it's a twelve foot wide. Concrete sidewalk that's designed to be used by everybody. Um. And there's some interesting implications for that, which is once you have enough pedestrians to make it a real place, it's not bikeable anymore. Cause. One, one person with a dog on an extension leash or two people walking side by side and you, you know, your, your bike is just. Not going to fit. Um, and there's no, you know, there's no lane on the street. So. Really good conversations to have really early on. Um, I also think, you know, we had the level one and level two. Categorization here, which was about, has this been scoped or studied or anything at all? Or is this just a? We know we want it. Um, so I think there can be an action item. About, you know, following the adoption of this plan, taking on a big. Redo or update or. You know, basically bicycle pedestrian master plan that really uses the official map, um, as its. Framework. And it doesn't have to take two years. But you know, we did the best we could in the context of getting FBC done in Taff Corners, and we did a townwide map because the opportunity was there, but there's more work that could happen here.
If I could add a little bit of meat to that. Um, Bruce suggested Shun Pike was the better route to connect South Burlington.
Yeah.
But when Shun Pike dumps onto Brownell. What's the route people are going to take to connect to Harvest Lane or up to Route Two? The. There's some path along Brownell.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I don't think it's up to the specs of what people would need if that was our main route.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a sidewalk, you know, five foot sidewalk.
Um, and so, and it. For some users, it may. Work just to have a bike lane added to the street. I don't know. And then, um. Mountain View, it was supposed to be a separate. Um. Bike head path, and I think it's been revised to be a bike lane. Am I right?
It, yeah, in the twenty thirteen study, um, both options were presented to the, the working group. There was one landowner. Who, um. Didn't want. People on a bike path in their front yard essentially, uh, and that comment. Ended up driving a lot of the process at the end. Um. And you know, the interesting thing about that is, um, when Chit and Solid Waste took a look at this map with us, I don't know, a year and a half ago. And they said, gosh, you know, we're going to be developing this materials recovery facility down on Redmond Road, um, possibly a de-packaging facility. Um, which is what you do with expired juice boxes and, and food and essentially. Goes right from the back stock of the grocery store to a place that opens the can and puts the food in the compost and recycles the can. Better than just throwing it in the dump, although it's still feels wow. Um. Anyway, the point being, CSWD staff looked at this and said, gosh, you're really going to do on-road bike lanes here? Like, we're going to have a lot of truck traffic on Mountain View Road. Um. And. Have you thought about off-road facility? And I was like. Yeah, and then the process took a left turn and kind of, it's like the last minute.
And of course now the Murph is not going to be there. They're now looking at other properties because of what the new wetland delineation precludes it.
The Murph?
Yeah.
It's got a.
It's got a permit from us.
Oh. Well, I watched their meeting on the other night, their recent meeting, and they were, uh, going out to bid on other sites because of wetland limitations. And I, maybe it was for some part of it that's not the whole of it, but it sounded to me like it was something. But, but that's not material to this. I, I, I personally feel like if you're looking fifty years out, you're doing long range planning, you have a separate cycle track. I mean, it's like, right, um, a sep- a separate bike pad path. On that route. And maybe also a sidewalk eventually, but I, we don't know. But, um, the fact it changed to. To, to me, it's a, it's problematic that it changed to a bike lane. Because it doesn't solve all of the problem we were trying to solve.
Right.
And in that twenty thirteen study, that was actually the most expensive option, I believe.
The bike lane option, I think it's more.
On the north side, on the south side. The only real pinch point on the south side is where the homes are fairly close to Mountain View.
Those couple of lots.
Couple lots here.
Yeah.
And I thought about it and, you know, the golf course, so Summerfield's going to be stubbing out on their street. If the remaining three holes develop in the future. And you could loop through on the backside.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we like, we need to, we need to have a further conversation where we're getting into details about the official map. Um, and like what paths and stuff go where with everything that we just talked about in mind? Do you want to talk about the chap, the planning commission or like the chapter?
Well, yeah.
Chapter instead of getting into specifics on what paths should go where.
Right. And I, and I think what. The chapter can call for is to do this other process. So, you know, it. Yeah, we could, we could spend all night.
Yeah, and.
Maps because we all.
It was the year talking.
I apologize. I apologize for diving.
It's the fun part.
My purpose, you know, my purpose of diving wasn't to solve the problems. It was to point out the kind of problem we need to solve and to therefore. My purpose, you know, my purpose of diving wasn't to solve the problems, it was to point out the kind of problem we need to solve and to therefore
Yeah.
what body should be working on this. And it seems to me like there's, there isn't a sidewalk committee. There, there isn't a.
Well, this is another question is, is around capacity and you know.
Well, and C C R P C and those C P's, those grants, whatever they are. Could we, the way we did the modality, mode shift stuff, is it possible to work with C C R P C and have a subcommittee of this group or?
Yeah, um, so some of it, I think, is really big picture, there's a strong community desire for better facilities and a more interconnected network. Um, slightly smaller picture, we sort of have an idea of what that might look like because we did this official math work and we have some other master planning that's been done. Next steps, I think, are to clearly identify that we need the capacity, the, the funding and the enhanced planning to get those things off the ground. I think it's also okay in that chapter to say, but while we're doing all of that.
Yeah.
Full court press on Village to Taff Corners, if that's, you know, or or or, you know, pick a facility that's kind of a big goal and say, but while we're doing all that other master planning, we know we really need this. We've known that for a long time. We think it's really important to you know, in the life of this eight-year plan period to make progress on it. Um. So you can, you can have both, I think. And and later on, we can talk about prioritization, but you know, affordable starter homes, bike pad infrastructure, I like open space and keep my taxes low. To me, that's, that's like the tip of my tongue. What did the roundtables, the survey, the postcards and everything really tell us in the? And so, you know, there are good things to be accomplished under, under all of those um metrics. So, yeah, we don't have to review the whole chapter text. I didn't really do much there. I just wanted to roll in that status update because I, you know, the other i- um input I would welcome because I'm a little deficient on it, other than, you know, Village Roundabout stuff is are there particular vehicular issues that should be action items? Um, so, yes.
Yes. The other place I almost got hit there a couple of weeks ago, not on my bike, but in the car. The double left out of uh, I don't know what it is there. When you take, when you go Maple Tree Place, you go through the roundabout.
It's all, yeah, it's all Maple Tree.
It's all Maple Tree Place. Okay, you hit two A.
In the double.
And there's a double left.
Uh-huh.
And that flatbed truck that was on the inside lane and just totally ignore me. And um, we have no infrastructure, there's no painting on the roads. I realize this is state road, but um, there are places where we need better road markings, signs.
Mm-hmm.
Signaling.
The jiggle at uh Taff Corners, right, the main intersection too, when you're coming east on Route Two. To go straight, you have to angle over.
Yes, that's weird.
And some people, I've seen people go straight and drive right in the left turn lane of the other direction.
Yeah, and the coming the other direction is also awkward because you look and you see three lanes, cars facing you. And you're like, oh, I have to move over here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's weird stuff like that. They're, they all seem a little funky.
Yeah. I'm, I'm always amazed by V Trans's level of tolerance for slightly offset four-way intersections. Uh, Zephyr Road and Maple Tree Place Road on the other side.
Yep.
Woe unto the straight-through driver who is confronted with five people turning left who somehow think they have the right of way on.
What is with that? Why do people turning left only there think that they have the right of way?
And there's always, if you bike through there, there's always a little pile of taillight crumbs from all the vendor but vendors um on the road there, evidence of, you know, that it's not working.
Right.
So some of those, you know, will come down to things like interface with the state, make sure the state's aware of the problem areas, that sort of thing. Um, I'll bring this up because it was an interesting policy statement, not one I would anticipate showing up in the plan, but I was talking with a group of people who were I think interested in bike pad issues. Some of them are affiliated with the Energy Committee or other town committees. Um, I had a meeting with them and and um the town manager, we kind of went over some of the Bruce memo. And one of the um, one of the sort of themes of that meeting and that conversation, I'm losing my train of thought, I'm sorry, uh it was um.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll say something while you think of it.
Yeah.
And I apologize for saying one more thing, but it's um perhaps mostly directed at Steve, but I'm not sure. When people complain about the taxes in Vermont, what we just described is one of the issues. If you want to be able to see nice views and see farms and be spread out in your population and not crowded, you have more miles of road to maintain per resident you, and if you want to have the ability to do it on a bicycle and have a, make things that there's a nice place, and Vermont has a lot of that, and the amount of population to support the number of road miles. If you compare, New Hampshire has some very sparse areas, but they also have huge population, much more. If you took, if you divide the number of people by the number of road miles, in New Hampshire, you'd get a much more advantageous number. And so I feel like this is, you know, the quality of life issue is what costs something, and I think was it you, Steve, that was talking about the cost of inconvenience? And the, the price of inconvenience and um that, I just want to make the point that this is a bigger issue about why it's expensive to live in Vermont. And we're trying to solve that problem in our town.
Can, can we say something, since we saw so many dotted lines and days of being there? And every year we're going to add more and more dotted line, are we going towards to find the bullet and find it and figure it out and move on? Is that how we want to do it?
I think that's something I have a question on, um, something that Ellie and I put in when we were doing like the goal objective strategy was, one of the strategies was to implement a penny for path dedicated funding stream. And like, is that something that we're committing to putting in this town plan? Is that something we feel like has fine? It's not something the town has done before, but is it something that we're going to go for? It's kind of only one, it's one part of things.
Hello.
Hi.
This is the planning commission.
Oh.
All good.
Go next door.
Oh.
Yeah, around the back.
Go in the back and upstairs.
Do I have to go outside or?
Yes, it's the next building over.
Yeah, go out of this door, go around the back of the other building.
No, I, I, I think that's worth highlighting and and maybe coming back that this group has a bit of a discussion about that. But I think there are a couple of things, and we've, we've talked about them, whether it's housing or paths or open space, where the funding source, if there is one, is often the first thing on the chopping block, or it's just like, hey, these things are really expensive and it's really hard to, you know, that, that bond vote is twenty years old, that money's essentially gone. It's really hard to sort of put up a big chunk of money all at once. Do we want to talk about ways to kind of spread that um discomfort out a little bit? And thank you for giving me a minute to regain my train of thought. So the other person in that meeting was a representative from Local Motion. And one thing that um she said was, while you're doing your town plan, you know, she said, I'm working with a municipality, she didn't say which one, that is actually making a statement that they will not add any more vehicular capacity to their road system. So on the other side of building more bike pad is, I'll leave it as a question, how much more road? Um, and you know, there is, there is maintaining a road system for safety. And there's maintaining a road system for free flow at all hours of the day or for convenience or for something in between. So um, this is something our staff experiences a different version of this conversation during development review all the time. Hey, they're building that apartment building, that Summerfield subdivision, that Glazer project, isn't this, isn't the traffic bad enough already? Um, and the other guidance I'd love to have from this group as a group is do you want to say something about policy around vehicle traffic? Um, we do have some intersection improvements along the state highways, you know, planned or on the books, part of, some of them are part of the circumfrenential highways alternative. Those of you who were here in twenty eighteen, when we did the discussion about reinvigorating the impact fee, uh, we talked about whether the Maple Tree Place Roundabout, a million-dollar project to redo was going to be an impact fee project or not, and we decided that it was, but there was a big conversation of like, yeah, it's dumb and it's inconvenient. And it's not a real roundabout, it doesn't function like one, and sometimes there's spender vendors there. But is it worth spending money on? And I think it would be good to think about, imagine yourselves having that conversation about some of those other trouble spots in Williston, the places that, that back up. Um, you know, we had another version of that conversation about the village, right? I wrote a draft village master plan that said essentially, we're just going to deal with the fact that traffic backs up real bad in the afternoon out here at Oak Hill Road and Williston Road. And Megan said, no, I think we should say that we're going to try to fix that because I'm in that backup. And 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 if you're in it every day, it, it, I don't think it's as bad as it ever was uh since COVID.
Yeah, it's not.
But, but that was a really good and productive conversation to have of like, at the community level, what is the tolerance going to be for times when the road system will be uh safe but congested, when there will be lengthier delays if you're in a vehicle? And having some policy guidance around that, um, it can help with talking about intersection improvements. It can also happen uh or help with um talking about what level of pedestrian priority you might assign to a crosswalk signal. Um, I went for a run this morning and at Heinsberg Road and Williston Road in South Burlington, I waited four and a half minutes for a crossing signal before I gave up and and went. And then I heard it beeping behind me as I, as I left. But it had gone a light cycle and a half. So that's not the way that signal used to work. It's not the way it worked the last time I ran through there. But it, something happened and it has defaulted back to this like extremely low pedestrian priority. And one thing we know about bike and pedestrian is if you experience that once, it'll influence your decision to ever bother even trying to use that mode again. So thinking a little bit about like, if you have it in the town plan that says it's okay for there to be more vehicle delay to the favor of there being less pedestrian delay, that might come up in the next eight years in a conversation about scoping a change to an intersection or adding a crossing movement to an intersection. So just in a general sense, file that away and think about the way uh those, the, the car infrastructure and the bike pad infrastructure might interact. And are there policy statements that you want to have in the plan that might guide that conversation? Also that you can go this winter and you know, you, you're going to be bringing this to select board and saying, here's how we think that priority should go. What do you think? And then you, you collectively are going to get to have a bit of a, a conversation, maybe even a little bit of a debate about that. The good news is, the plan that gets adopted out of that is something that is a consensus document that hopefully everybody kind of holds themselves to over the next many years. So but that was the thing, was that some, some bold town is saying no more vehicular capacity as a, as a climate initiative, as a, you know, going to the favor of bike and pad. Um, but I don't think Emily and I would want to go to a, like a stand-up thing under our little tent with our little yellow postcards and say, hey, guess what we're thinking of doing? But not without the flak jackets on.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, that's my, that's my spiel for tonight on uh transportation.
And I think like when that point's made to the public, like remembering that you can still improve an intersection and make it work better.
Right.
And then it's working better for vehicles and pedestrians and improving safety. Because I think a lot of the complaints like, oh, this intersection backs up a lot, and it's not necessarily the volume of traffic that's going through it, it's that it needs to be reconfigured, like industrialized. Slight change in the grand scheme of things, we're not doubling the width of it. But it'll work better.
Sounds good. Anything, anyone else wants to add on transportation before we move on to Team Red?
Do you guys want feedback on what's there?
It seems like we're still at a point of transforming the objectives and strategies into text, but I think.
That's fine.
Yeah.
The introduction's very good.
Ellie, anything you want to add there?
Team Red? Yeah, I'm pulling it up. Um, so we are talking about um archaeology and cultural resources. Um. Our town plan currently is fairly brief about archaeology. Um, the history needs a little bit revamping, especially in its framing of um indigenous people, bringing in more early history into the introduction. Um, and then thinking a little bit more broadly about, you know, how we bring that perspective um moving forward. Um, I had a good meeting yesterday with Megan and Bella joined in as well, thinking about um how archaeology and how our perspectives kind of interrelate with what we were talking about with managed landscapes. So our perspective of Vermont is rural agrarian culture, which was such a brief point in time in uh Vermont. Yeah, the history of the land. Um. Recent changes in state law mean that we might need to take on local regulation of archaeological resources, similar to how we have, you know, wildlife studies or wetlands delineations. Um, it's currently required when there's a project that needs state or federal funding or is going through a state or federal permitting process, state being something like Act two fifty. Um, and there's a gap right now, a project that's below those thresholds, um but it's still getting, it's still doing development. Um, those projects aren't having their archaeological resources landscaped um or catalogued. Um, an interesting thing that I found out was that, except for burial grounds, which are protected separately in state law, any archaeological resources on you, your land you own, and they're your private property until you go through a permitting process, and then they come into the, the review regime. Um, and as part of our growth center designation, there's some um findings and conclusions in that designation that say, hey, your, your town plan needs to think about archaeological resources and ultimately something needs to be in your bylaw. Um, so the goal here would be to um meet or exceed the Act two fifty standards for archaeological review um in ways that balance best practices with other land use goals. Um, item number two ties into that goal most directly, so establish that resource conservation area and have standards, um along with that, study the impact of costs and permitting. So um, for example, I know a recent development in Williston, their phase one study was sixteen thousand dollars. And you divide that over the number of units, that adds costs. And then phase two, where you're doing more thorough investigation is more expensive. So understanding, um like we did with um the habitat disturbance assessment, we had an understanding of okay, what is that cost if the applicant is now paying us and we are hiring that consultant to do the work? Um, and then explore other methods beyond um zoning to investigate, document and preserve archaeological resources. So if you have a lot of land, how can we, you know, encourage people to explore what archaeological resources in Williston are, you know, hidden but there, um that would help inform um our knowledge of the past. Um. I tie into Team Yellow Conservation Areas. Chapin, you're going to have to help me with the pronunciation.
Abba Zimun Haniq.
Abba Zimun Haniq.
Good.
Um, so this ties into the joint meeting um the Conservation Commission and Historic Design Advisory Committee had back in February, where the general tenor of that conversation was balancing quality and quantity. So if we can have quality in terms of a really good archaeological resource that's preserved, that becomes part of a park where it can be an education and informative opportunity, balancing that with just pure quantity of finding a bunch of things and knowing a bunch of sites, but not um being able to bring that out to the greater world. And there is some sensitivity here. Unlike a wetlands delineation or a habitat disturbance assessment where that information can be extremely public, um, only qualified people with credentials, not me, um, can see like the true maps of where resources are because we don't want people going around and digging.
People with credentials, not me, um can see like the true maps of where resources are, because we don't want people going around and digging in the dirt. So. There's a little bit of a balancing act here. The exact locations of archaeological sites um are kept. Private. Improve interpretive signage um about archaeological and indigenous history.
Where is that one? I was looking for it to come up.
Yeah, that's number five. Um, and then I'm skipping number four. Um, so this will probably end up living in another goal section that's more cultural resources, which plays into more modern historic preservation. Um, but thinking about historic resource assessments of. Town owned buildings. Um, and then encouraging or incentivizing that for any critical. Um, buildings in the. In the town. Who do we still need to talk to? Um, the state, um, the state historic preservation office, particularly the archaeology staff. Talk to act two fifty administrative staff about how that process works. What types of studies and um reports would be required to adopt? Uh, a bylaw amendment to bring archaeological into the bylaw fold. Um, talk with UVM archaeology as well. Um, I have a whole laundry list of questions that um Megan and I brainstormed that.
By the way, number three, um Melinda Scott informed me on the Abbezymanahani area. We could plant trees, but we can't couldn't dig a hole to put in a foundation or.
Like nothing deeper.
Yeah, we couldn't even put when we build a lead tube, we couldn't even put on a sonotube in.
Emily, you may wanna add to the people to talk to the historical society.
Yes.
I like. Who's Jess Robinson?
He's the state archaeologist.
So. A little bit of what Emily's talking about about. Taking on local jurisdiction in this, if you're if you're listening to like Vermont Public Radio, talking about the last legislative session in the Be Home Act or. Um, the the law that. Reformed or sets a pathway to reform for act two fifty. And it's all about making it easier to permit development in places that are planned for growth uh while expanding jurisdiction of that statewide program in in areas that. Uh, aren't covered by it now, but have high generally natural resource value. So. The pathway that that law lays out is essentially that in the areas where jurisdiction is is turned over to the towns. First off, that's not automatic. The town has to apply. To do that. And it has to show to the natural resource board, the board that manages actually fifty applications. That its own local rules are performing the same functions that the act two fifty process would perform. So. As a. Housing goal or a just sort of taking more control over what happens, for example, in our growth center goal. That pathway has now been established in what in state law. Obviously, nobody's taken it yet because it just got adopted at the end of June. Um, and. I think that when municipalities start thinking about, oh, gosh, I'm gonna take on essentially becoming become act two fifty. For, you know, all or some portion of Williston. There are things that. We do. That meet the act two fifty criteria, you know, the the anti sprawl crack criteria are addressed by the fact that we allow dense development in a growth center and not just like along every. Corridor, uh, for example, um, there are things that um. You know, we we have wetland setbacks, just like the ones that the Agency of Natural Resources wants to see uh when they're reviewing something. We don't have the same regime around mitigating for impacts to prime agricultural soils. That that uh occur when someone goes through active fifty review. Um, we only do historic review currently in the village, whereas if you're in action fifty jurisdiction and you're going to impact a historic structure. We will need review from the state um historic preservation office. On that, uh, and there's actually a board, a volunteer board that will review that. So we don't, we don't do that. Um, anywhere but in the village. Um, and archaeological resources are another one where um. Right now, there's there's no discussion of impacts or non-impacts archaeological resources when a project goes through the DRB or the certificate of appropriateness process. In the growth center. I would expect over the next couple of years, we're going to get some help and some guidance around how to best. Modify local bylaws and development review processes to ensure a successful turnover of that act two fifty process, but um. It really remains to be seen. If that actually makes things easier for everybody. Um. Some of you have been around long enough to know that it used to be that septic permits were issued by towns. Um, and there is still actually in law, a parallel system where. Uh, although most people get their septic permit in most towns from the state of Vermont now. Uh, there, there may not be any yet. I think Charlotte was one of the last holdouts. Milton was a holdout until a couple of years ago, where if you were getting a permit for a septic system, you actually got that wastewater permit from the town. There's delegation. And I used to go to conferences where someone from the state would give a talk about how great delegation was. And you know, you can. You can take control over this process and you can administer it locally. It would be so much better. And the room full of zoning administrators were all like, this is like, not what I want to be doing is reviewing the technical. Aspects of wastewater, you know, proposed wastewater systems. This, you know, I'm I'm good at figuring out if the shed needs to set back or. If the driveway is the right width. I I don't want any part of this. Same thing for shoreline protection standards. You can actually take the state process over locally. Almost nobody does. You can say, you know what? We're just gonna say in our local process like we do for Lake Iroquois, make sure you go get your shoreline permit. Here's our zone and come get our permit when you're done. Um, so I'm a little bit. Given the way the law ended up playing out and what was on the table at the beginning of the legislative session was everything from. Areas planned for growth will simply be exempt from act two fifty. Like you would just take the Taff Porter's Growth Center and nothing in the growth center would ever go through act two fifty again. Um, all the way to um, there will be no exemption and everybody will still have to go through local and state permitting. And what we got is pretty close to that. Because essentially the town has to go through state permitting and say, here's our zoning and we're proving to you that it does everything that you do under act two fifty. And the municipality has to take over responsibility for enforcement of all of the existing act two fifty permits and conditions within that geographic area. Which I'm not so sure anybody's gonna wanna do. So. The reason. Some of this is in here. Um, that there's this path for it's looking at it under the bylaw. Some of it is because it's it's good to conserve archaeological resources. Some of it is because if we wanna be able to consider that act two fifty turnover, we would need to have this. So.
We may need it for growth center.
The. I'd have to look at that so that, you know, the same bill also reformed the state designations program. Growth centers won't be growth centers anymore. They'll be um, I forget if they called it. Designated, well, actually growth centers won't even be tiered. They're just a designated neighborhood. Downtowns get tiered and villages get tiered. Um, level one, two and three or I forget.
It's so confusing.
What they adopted. Um, basically, all within that same bill, there are. New bylaw preemptions about housing and density that we're gonna have to deal with in the next year. There's this idea of an act two fifty turnover. And then there's a reform of the state designations program and they're supposed to all kind of work together. Um, but there's a lot to be figured out there. So. In this chapter, in the land use chapter and a couple of other places in the plan, it's a little bit of a. Like, we're gonna know more maybe eight months from now with what what these chapters should really say to put the town on the path to doing what state law is asking it to do. But. I predict a bunch of us planners are gonna have to sit down and kind of bang our heads together a little bit about um what it's all gonna look like. And a lot of it also gets driven by the regional planning commissions because they're the ones responsible for mapping areas planned for growth and actually standardizing. Mapped land use categories across all of. The lands in their respective counties and the state. So the other thing that's happening as a result of this bill is there's essentially. Comparable statewide land use planning um designations for types of land across the whole state. So theoretically, an area planned for growth. In Williston is the same sort of thing as an area planned for growth in Brattleboro. Um, because we don't have that right now. So. It's just gonna be a ride for about the next four years. And we're trying to make sure the plan is written in a way that sets the town up to to do what we find out we need to do.
In the meantime, what I just saw there about. Um, following at at least act two fifties. Yeah. Standards looked right to me apart from that. That it's good to protect archaeological resources. I hope it's not a huge cost for for somebody doing a small project, but the. Process of review was appropriate.
One of my concerns is actually timing too, because. Having a archaeological assessment. They have know how long those take. But I can imagine, for instance, you can't do them in January. You know, there may be. You know, there's certainly a cost involved and may also be logistics and other kinds of delays. And so I just think as an action item, one of them is to figure out like. Even before we have rules about it, like what are we, what is it that we're on the ground, in practice, asking people to do? You know, we say. Oh, yeah, you wanna bump out your basement, eight feet? You know, you gotta do this. Um, that's the. Then we should, we should go in with our eyes very open to exactly what that involves, the cost of timing.
Yeah.
And availability of consulting archaeologists.
Yeah. Yeah, workforce and and you mentioned, you know, oh, you wanna bump out your basement. What is that minimum threshold where this stuff comes into play? So, you know. No matter what somebody wants to do on their property, we're always looking at their proximity to a wetland, for example. But a lot of things we're not necessarily applying like design review to, or you know, not everything goes to the DRV, et cetera. So are there, is there a list of small things that are, you know? Okay, um, so keeping an eye on that, um.
Is there um feedback that you're looking for, Emily, for this chapter or anything that you wanted to get? Input on while you were sharing it?
Yeah, whatever you guys, whatever comes to mind, we'll throw it at it and. Figure a way to fit it in.
It looks good to me and I really like your next steps, that list of things to ask the state. Is exactly the questions I'd have.
And I mean, to some degree. The question about like confidentiality or or the sort of relative um shielding of the maps. I think what happens in act two fifty right now is. Yeah, it looks like you're in an area, you know, act two fifty sees that it looks like you're an area that might have archaeological resources. You get turfed over to a department of the state and you wait for the the guy from the state to come out and look at the site. And make a determination as to what further assessment is required. And it may be that the municipality ends up just being the one who says, yeah, you gotta go talk to the state. Um, that could be the way ag soils works too. In other words, we don't maybe have to set up our whole. Uh, own offsite ag soil impact mitigation program.
That's good.
Yeah, we might just be, we might have to have it in our land use rules that if somebody is going to impact prime ag soils. They have to go off and engage with that agency within the state of Vermont, not not that we have to replicate the whole thing. We just have to replicate the jurisdiction and and kind of the handoff um to that. You know, it's like, like, we don't confirm wetland delineations. We generally ask somebody to go have this, the state person look at their wetland lines if that's a, if that's an issue and they'll go do that. We have done that with somebody who was like bumping an addition out. On their property and said, hey, you know, go have Tina Heath look at where your wetland line is and. Let's let's, you know, feet mattered in this particular case. So it was like, let's. Let's do that and they'll come do that. Um, so. Yeah, we shouldn't have to be all become archaeologists or all like here in the staff, like it's more um. I'm really. A little concerned just about the mechanics of the whole process and like you said, the delay and sort of. You know. The staff work that might be involved.
Right. It's all routed through the state. I mean, that's like a half page bylaw standard. It's like.
Yeah, just.
Do the thing and get a present a letter from the state at your at your permits to middle.
Right.
But then you're correct, we still wanna know. What mechanically does that mean to different sized projects?
I mean, what I'm what I'm most concerned about is theoretically. The idea is that there's relief from the act two fifty process. So that it's less burdensome to build things in places the state has planned. For things to be built.
Right.
And I am feeling right now. Like a lot of the burden of making it a smoother process is gonna fall to the municipalities. And and I'm talking as someone who has, you know, the second or third largest planning staff in the state. And I'm worried.
Yeah, right.
You know, um. And and so we'll, you know, we'll see. Uh, we just, we just wanna make sure here and in the land use chapter that we're on the right path to. Um, doing that.
I'm also glad you put in about signage, interpretive signage, because I think it helps to raise. Uh, the public's. Uh, level of awareness. So then when they encounter the regulations, they understand. The context.
Yeah, we had a nice conversation about that yesterday.
Yeah. Does anyone have further questions on things? They are curious if they'll be in this chapter, they think should be flagged or comments to make about. What's in here? Team yellow, recreation and parks.
Andrew isn't here, right?
Correct.
Shayla isn't here, right?
No.
I'm not here, right? I. Seven minutes or something. Um, I did not work on this and I also didn't get an email from Andrew. And so I really feel like we should skip it for tonight unless. Any of the other staff is aware of questions to. I frankly am a little bit overwhelmed because I feel like I want to have opened the current town plan. All the input. And and we're sort of starting to assemble that, but I. The, when I've been productive is when I've sat down with Andrew and he's already scanned things and we are starting about how to organize stuff. Uh, it just seems to be a little bit beyond my ability to cold start.
That's okay.
On that.
Yeah, I think we've all experienced, um, this is a lot harder than an update. I think it's fruitful and and it's worth it this time. I think we are probably gonna do a good enough job that the next one can be more of an update eight years from now. Um. And it is like I have all of these past town plans open on my desk. So what I'm not doing is copy pasting. Or starting with the twenty sixteen chapter and have like, you know, changing the numbers. But I am, it is worth, you know, and we we put a bunch of these on the website. It is worth sometimes going back and like, well, what did we say about this like ten years ago? Um, so.
And what did other towns say about it? And to me, it, by the time I do all that, I've lost.
I did, I did note, um, Chayton, at the bottom of this chapter, and I meant to bring it up when we're sort of looking at official map, the idea of um, Surf Highway right of way. For recreation. And this was sort of something that. Kind of slipped into the official map, um. I think. Wherever it goes in the plan, and this this could be as good a place as any, the idea of saying. We have this. Really interesting shaped, really interestingly located piece of land. That was set aside for something that we've been told that, you know, it's not going to happen. Um. And it is, it is sometimes being repurposed. It's where the Vermont gas transmission line was placed. Um, there is a policy for reuse of that right of way from the state. I think there's a. Strategy for the town that's something like actively engage in. The ongoing. Basically, keep the conversation going about the idea of repurposing that right of way um and turning it. Into an asset for the town and not just sort of like a wayward. You know, remnant of of land.
Well, it's on the official map as a north south.
It is.
Rec path. And I wanted to claim a bit of the triangle of the exit under the Abbezymanahani. Park.
It's another good point because you have a bullet, two bullets up, um, talking about using the official map um to secure trail easements. And I would expand beyond that a little bit and say, it's also okay, you know, we only mapped green spaces on the official map within the form based code area because. We just really needed to do that level. because we just really needed to do that level of planning for that area. But I think it's also okay in this plan to call for if there are highly desirable parcels or portions of parcels. And, and this brings me around to like some of what we experienced when we went through the Glazer project that should be on the map as desirable pieces of not just like protected open spaces, like public land. Like this is a piece of the Smith farm, it's owned by the Smith family. It should really be a public park or a country park, um. Or if the Smith family develops, it would be really good if this corner of the parcel was not where the houses went. Because it's really desirable for a future public facility for the town. Um, I don't know that you have to do all that mapping as part of this town plan. But I think this plan could call for expanding the use of the official map tool beyond the form based code um, boundary.
Emily, could you scroll it up? I didn't realize that when you were talking that, no, the other way, uh, that you were talking about that circ highway right away. Oh, that's if that was the end, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just that very last
He was the same, yes, that we can, uh, okay.
So I, thanks. You know, I think lean, lean on the idea of getting those things on a map that ends up being a, you know, a regulatory document, statement or policy because I'd much rather like, like throughout the specific plan process with Glazer over those, you know, what it was eighteen months. And every time we've dealt with growth management and trying to assign points for open space, I thought to myself, wouldn't this be easier if the town just said what it wanted? Like on a map and, and had some, some regulation behind it. And, you know, the hard part is you're really leaning on somebody's private property rights that way. You're literally saying, hey, Mr. Smith, that corner of your field, if you ever go to develop, I don't want you to put houses there and I want the opportunity to buy it from you and I'm the town and therefore I can throw my weight around and you know, essentially map myself a right of first refusal. It's, it's heavy handed. But hey, Mr. Smith, if you want to develop your property ever, spin the wheel. And we'll see how this growth management and or specific plan process shakes out after eighteen months where the relevant elements might or might not be the most prominently discussed ones. Doesn't feel to me like it's ultimately any less imposing on the owner. And I think it's a less likely or less clear um, outcome. And, and I'd say spin the wheel and I'm being a little bit pejorative about the whole thing and, and administering it all for sixteen years. So I'm gonna take liberty of doing that. But I, I would say this feels like a Rube Goldberg machine to get open space. You know, to assign points and to judge and to, it's like, just put it on the map. You know, um, and, and also, you know, that, that gives you, there's no substitute for saying, hey, Mr. Smith, we're putting this on the map, we should talk. Because maybe you don't want to develop right now, but maybe you'd like to sell that right now and maybe we'd like to buy it right now. Um, and it can open the door for that as well.
Or, or even of things like conservation easements or something like that.
Is that why most of our open space is wetland?
You know, you, you end up kind of getting remnants, right? Um, and, and when you start trying to wrestle, you know, we experienced this a lot, I think with the form based code, like to get an orderly pattern that makes sense for, um, you know, especially that denser development. Like, oh, well, that's wet and the ownership lines don't line up. I mean, the, the entire Hamlet Finney Crossing interface. Um, the way those neighborhoods touch each other, if you, if you Google Earth it, it's like this weird acute angle triangle thing that's going on. And, and, you know, people will probably wonder in a hundred years, like, why did the streets do this weird thing? Why is there this like triangle thing? Like, what's going on here? It's just where the property line was. It's all it is. Um,
Is it in the lower right there is that you're talking about?
Well, yeah, so you know, that line between Finney and Hamlet that runs sort of like at an angle and Chelsea, you can see it's also the line that is between Chelsea and Finney.
Yeah, where the rec path is.
Where the rec path is. That was, um, parts of the property lines around the Zephyr Bowdrey Farm.
Okay.
Um, the farmer's name was Zephyr Bowdrey and now we have Zephyr Road and Right. And then we have weird things like, um, where Emily is, that Seymour Street.
Yep.
Points straight at what looks like a street but isn't in front of Lenny Shoes, which goes right across the street into Helena Drive, which eventually will go right across.
Here because people were kind of cutting through here.
We did put that down on the official map.
We did.
Did, yeah.
That's on the official map and that's, that's um, reinforced by the code, but you know, weird stuff like that just kind of abounds. And I really see the official map process as kind of a, a cure for that. Where you go, okay, like, yeah, sure, that's where the property lines are. But some things are so important that we might actually map our streets or our trails or our open spaces across those property lines. So rather than highlighting a whole parcel and saying, yeah, like most of this one ought to be open space, but then maybe not most of that one. It's like map the resource. Um, and try to assemble it. And there, there's enough undeveloped or stuff that hasn't happened yet, even in a place like Taft Corners, we saw this through that exercise where it's like, well, yeah, you can do an official map here and you can actually envision it coming together in a different way. And not getting some of these weird nonsensical
Wait, you also see which developers like straight roads, which developers like curvy roads.
They do. Trying to make people do squares is, it's hard.
It's hard. Um, so in the absence of working more on Team Yellow and thinking about what we need next for just moving forward, or actually, is there anything on Team Blue? Cause you revisions from previous chapters.
Yeah, I think nothing new there.
Yeah, and Melinda I think is still over at Select Ward because she's
I, I will add a couple of points if I could, just sort of related. Um, so in the last meeting, I agreed to write a piece about sort of septic versus sewer, what it means, why it's important, and we'll figure out where it fits later. Um, to that end, I've got an appointment next week with Chelsea Mandigo, who runs the water treatment plant for Essex. And I've got a private tour of the water treatment plant set up and I'm going to interview her and I'll gather as much information as I can about, you know, why it's important for the towns to collaborate and what it means to pump everything up to Essex and, and all that kind of stuff. So any questions you have that I should ask, I'd appreciate it if you'd send them to me. I'm meeting with her end of next week. So I've got lots of time, but you know, just let me know if there's anything you'd like me to dig into while I'm there.
I, I toured with her two years ago with some students and I'll send you some questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Our conversations have been excellent. She's, she's very willing and giving and, and you know, it's, it's going to be a really interesting tour. I don't say that to too many people, given the subject matter, but that's okay. The, uh, the other thing I want to mention, just on Melinda's behalf, is she has added extensively to the actions pieces, especially on the hazard mitigation chapter. But I'd rather her, she's, uh, her speak to those, uh, when she comes back in or next week, next meeting, whatever. And I've done quite a bit of work on the people chapter again as well, editing, just kind of cleaning it up. So that's all I've got.
Um, Steve, just, just a couple of things, um, Chelsea is a former Williston planning intern.
See, you're like, you're a future rookie guy in, in sewage.
Um, she, she interned with us like, I think it was the first year I was here, so like two thousand eight. Uh, also make, make sure if they still have it, they show you the matchbox car collection. It's the number one thing that survives the trip down the pipes. Um, they, they roll right along. I think they have a little museum, uh, and then for everybody, um, just, uh, know that when we're talking about energy stuff in the town plan and enhanced energy plan, Melinda's been working really diligently with the energy committee on all of that and it will come back. I plugged it in August sixth, it might actually be August twentieth by the time we get to it, but um, that is, that is also chugging along and, and we'll get there. But the enhanced energy plan will continue to be its own sort of piece of the town plan, not as wholesale rewritten as the rest. And there's just some reasons for that about how it needs to meet the requirements for enhanced energy plans that, um, means that that's what we'll do.
Um, just as like a, it's not fully on the agenda, maybe go in rogue tiny bit, but like just in terms of getting our chapters and, and what would be helpful moving forward. I know full disclosure, I've had trouble making the time and finding the direction and getting the traction. Does anyone have any ideas they want to throw out about how it would be best to spend, like spend our time or spend the next chunk of like when we would go over these chapters or what that would look like or what's worked for someone finding momentum?
I think the thing that works for me is meeting with Emily and Mickey and then and then kind of going out, uh, you know, kind of getting a bunch of ideas and then diving in and putting them into the chapter and um, you know, I love that Emily has done like for the archaeology thing, we just met yesterday and you already wrote like a rough piece of it. And I, today I started going in and kind of editing a little bit and that kind of thing. And so having that kind of spark, collective spark really helps a lot. Um, the time is tough. It is hard to fit in for sure. Um, it's easier for me in the summer, but like, it's hard for everybody. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, to, to my team, I just know I need to do more. And sitting down and writing for any amount of time uninterrupted is, um, like I'm seriously considering putting in my work from home paperwork and putting myself in the garden shed for, you know, a day a week to, to make it happen. Um, but collectively, uh, I know some of the, the chapters are still in pretty rough draft form, but I'm really happy with the progress we're all making. Um, we, we have time. We're gonna get there, um, and, um, you know, keep plugging away in whatever way it works. Um,
Bayla's been helping.
Bayla's been helping. Um, Bayla's also sort of, uh, in her project acting as our watchdog over sort of the objective strategies and actions. And trying to start to, she, you may see at some point, um, numbers on those, like a one point, one point five kind of, uh, framework. What I want to do is towards August, September, bring just from the objective level down. So not the goal level, which is like a livable, but like objective strategy, action. And put those in a place where we can look at them all together and start to look for overlaps and similarities. And one of my ideas is, for example, if we see in three chapters, um, three objectives that are actually kind of saying the same thing, we'll rewrite them all into one. We'll repeat it three times in the plan, but we'll cross pollinate and say, this is, this objective also appears over here and over here. Um, and we'll consolidate them in that implementation chapter at the end, so it's not repeating. But we'll say, you know, this one three X, like meeting this objective serves several different things. Um, and I I'm not sure if it's a weave anymore. It might be more of a spider web or an hourglass. I've been, we'll figure that part out, but, um, I think that's going to help us at the end sort of tease out again those big giant priorities and like, oh, wow, if we go after this objective, it does these other three things. Uh, the other thing, if anybody really quick has anything they want to give me, um, I'm meeting with a person from the Vermont Department of Health tomorrow about, uh, public health in town planning. Um, Department of Health offered us assistance on the last plan and we did kind of a surgical, uh, plugin thing. Um, she was really excited that she's catching us at a moment where we're in a more draft form. So if there, you know, I can think about like things like planning for active transportation and adding shade to places and making sure there's adequate recreation space and gathering places for when there's a pandemic and stuff like that. And I don't know, air quality, like I have sort of my little brainstorm of like, what are the town planning things that, uh, towns do that enhance public health? But if you think of anything now or, or before, um, you know, the weekend, let me know. Um, I'm not anticipating, she, she kind of said, I noticed you're not writing a public health chapter. And I sort of responded, I think livable of the livable resilient equitable is healthy ought to exist as a metric under livable. We're certainly want people in, in future Williston to be healthier and we want to be supporting that, but how we run that thread throughout the plan, um, if there are things that you think of that I haven't thought of or, or just things you think of, let me know. We may tag them, uh, in the plan.
I would just say, look at the hazard mitigation stuff that we talked about last time because that's got a lot of worthwhile material.
Great.
Um, something I thought about with equity, equity and active transportation is that tension between using a bus system as a way for people without cars to get to grocery stores.
Food, it's your food.
Like food security and also like access to healthcare. But then that it's also a bus system for commuters, like where that balance is for GMT.
I do think there is a balance.
There's not right now. And like, if there's a, like doing like micro transit for food security and public health better than like the fixed lines and kind of this thing.
Yeah, definitely. Um, you know, there was a time when there wasn't a bus shelter where Blair Park Road comes out onto Williston Road and there's a bunch of senior housing in Blair Park and you would see some poor person, you know, with a walker in a snowbank waiting for the bus to go to you know, generally like a very regular thing. They needed to go access it, you'd be a medical, it's like, you know, wow, this, you know, we actually, we also didn't have a sidewalk on that side of Blair Park Road. That was a recent addition. That actually met a lot of needs. So definitely thinking about yeah, health access, food access, um, a lot of the social stuff people have talked about, social connection, combating wrongliness. Um, is supporting informal networks that support people or check in on people. All that kind of stuff, um, I think can be called out and what I'd love to do is in most of the chapters have something that says, hey, this is a public health thing. Um, you know, yeah, it's about making it safe for people to bike, but also it's about people being able to bike, which makes them healthier.
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
Great, thank you.
Matt, just a quick, a quick observation. You might want to say something, uh, when you have that meeting about enhanced communications around the kind of stuff that quickly turns into myth and legend. For example, cross species jumping of things like bird flu, avian flu, that kind of thing. Anything the town can do as part of the hazard mitigation process to have people say, hey, take a breath, here's where you can go to get the right information about what's actually going on might be valuable.
Yeah, that's a really good point. Um, I, I know we knew during COVID that you know, if we'd have these department head meetings, it's like, hey, people are going to be, start asking us stuff. What's our answer about?
You know, contingency planning or scenario planning or crisis management associated with health.
Yeah.
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 It's another pandemic or, you know, another vast like mass fascination required. What are we going to do at a state level? I mean, what would else?
Yeah.
So that we can do this problem.
I was also thinking about, um, the past, uh, maybe this was just last summer that we had, uh, or this year before. Um, with the wildfires and impacting our air quality. And especially when you can't, like, that means you can't open your window and use a fan. And yet it's really hot. And so having that is kind of just yet another uh, plug for good public spaces, including indoor cooled spaces
Yeah.
that have safe air quality.
Yeah.
Where people can go when they're not able to keep their house safe.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a really good point.
Cool. All right. So we'll direct further ideas if you have them for both Matt's conversation and for Steve's conversation. To our health. Those are your
Also connected, believe it or not.
Yes. Very connected. Um, but do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, John Connor. Thank you.